Good morning, everybody. My name is Gillian Askew. I might have seen you all before. I represent an organisation called Go For Growth. And we are working with North Yorkshire County Council to support the procurement process for the approved provider list for adult social care. Just going to wait a couple of seconds as people join us. It is a busy session this morning. We've got lots of people who have signed up. So that might just take a couple of seconds for people to join. So whilst that's happening, we'll just run through some basic housekeeping principles for the session today. So as you can see, I'm joined by Tim and Hannah from North Yorkshire County Council. So thank you both for coming along today. The purpose of today's session is to give a high level overview of sections four and five of the application form. And really, that's about how to complete the quality section and the pricing sections of the application form. What that means is if there are technical questions or actual pricing related questions in terms of cost of care, fair cost of care or average cost, those questions will still need to go through the clarification question process. The procurement is now live and that's what the clarification process is for. So questions today will take towards the back end of the session. But really, it's about the application form itself that we're here to talk about today. So please do use the chat and Q and A function. If you would like to introduce yourselves, to say hi, you're here, that would be brilliant. For Q and A, if you can use the Q and A function as opposed to the chat function for actual questions, that would be great. It's just a little bit easier for us to keep on top of. As I said, we're going to run through two sections, if I can get my teeth in today, and then we will have some time for Q and A at the end. It is an open forum to ask questions about what Hannah and Tim run through. So I know you don't want to hear from me today, so I'm going to hand over to my colleagues, Tim and Hannah, to do an introduction and then get straight into the good stuff. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tim Wood. I'm a procurement officer from North Yorkshire County Council. And I've been working on this approved provider list procurement, which is now live on your tender. And I just want to talk about volume five, which is the application form, specifically part four. But I'm just quickly going to touch on some of the other areas because the procurement is live and we've had a couple of questions come in. So I'll just cover some areas that questions have come in about. And then I'll move on to part four, which is the quality questions, which is towards the end of that volume five application form. But this is the new approved provider list for home-based support, residential nursing care homes, community-based support and supported living. It starts on the first of November this year, the new APLs. New work will be awarded through those lists. So if you're a current provider and you want new work, which I sincerely hope you do, then you'll need to apply through this new list. Existing packages of care will continue as legacy packages. So if you don't want any new work, for whatever reason, you will keep those existing care packages. But if for whatever reason they stop and then restart, they would restart as a new package of care and therefore through the new approved provider lists. In order to get new work, you need to be on the on the new list. So I hope that makes sense. There are guidance videos which Go For Growth have helped us with on other areas of the application form and will provide those links for you. I've been through the application form videos. I really hope they're clear and they're helpful and they'll instruct you how to, you know, how to complete the form. I do appreciate the form looks quite big and intimidating. Sadly, quite a lot of it is mandatory. The council doesn't have any power to reduce the number of questions, et cetera. They're all set by government and the vast majority are tick box ones. So hopefully you'll be able to speed through the form. Not all of the form needs to be completed. You know, if you're not part of a parent, you should have a parent company, the bits you don't have to answer, et cetera. So whilst it looks quite intimidating, I think you'll be able to get through it quite quickly. So parts one and two are pretty much mandatory tick box forms. There are some little bits to fill in around, you know, company number, company name, address, et cetera. But most of it's just tick box. We've had a few questions on part three around references and insurance. I'll just quickly cover that. References should be your host local authority. So if you're based in North Yorkshire and you do work with North Yorkshire County Council, then North Yorkshire County Council should be your reference. If you don't do work with your host local authority, you can pick another relevant example and try and make it relevant to the to the list you're applying for. In terms of insurance, we've had questions around if the insurance form needs to be signed. Ideally, it does. We would appreciate third party evidence that you have those insurances in place. So ideally signed by your insurance company or broker. But if not, we'll accept an email trail as evidence. So an email from your insurance company or broker to you, which you then forward to us, we'd accept that as evidence. And that moves us on to part four of the application form, which is the quality section. And this is a section I'll be covering in most detail. So Hannah, I don't know if you could present that.
I can certainly try. Bear with me. Right, let's have a look. So volume five application form, here we go. Tell me if you can see that, Tim.
See that? Yep, if it can be made slightly bigger, I don't know if it can. If not, I'll just talk through it.
Okay.
Yeah, so as you can see on the screen, that's part four. This is the quality questions. So we are not evaluating price as part of the procurement. Hannah's going to talk about the pricing element, but we are evaluating quality. This is going to be done over nine questions. Five of the questions are scored and that's made clear on that right hand column. Two of the questions are information only and two of the questions are threshold. So the threshold questions around safeguarding and safety and business continuity plans. If you scroll down slightly, Hannah, and we'll see the threshold questions. Yep, that's fine. So you can see the safeguarding and safety one there. It's made clear on the right hand side how you pass that threshold. I you will need to answer yes to that question in order to proceed. If you answer no, I'm afraid we won't be able to take your application any further. There are threshold questions in the general application form and it's always made clear how you can pass that threshold. But in terms of this quality element, there are only two threshold requirements. There are some information only questions. So these questions are not scored as part of the evaluation process. However, your response will allow us to allocate a red amber green rating or a rag rating to yourselves. And this will determine how soon following appointment to the approved provider list that we do something called the quality conversation. Now, this quality conversation is part of the, it's a quality monitoring tool. It's mentioned in the procurement, but it's actually not part of the procurement process. And what it does is it ensures that you understand our expectations around quality. And it's a two way process. So you learn about us and we learn about you. So this discussion will look at responses that you've provided to these questions and it will also ask further questions quite often on similar areas. So I'll ask about recruitment, safeguarding, et cetera. But it's a two way process. We can't really put a two way process part of the procurement. It's very difficult from a sort of legislative compliance point of view. But that's going to be a quality monitoring tool, the quality conversation. And this will inform that conversation, but it doesn't stop you getting on to the list. What might happen is you get onto the list, we have the quality conversation and we think that you need to do some work around quality in order to comply to our expectations. So you might go on to the list and be suspended for a period of time whilst we work with you. But that will be, that's a quality monitoring issue. It's not actually part of the procurement. So the quality conversation doesn't stop you coming on or off the approved provider list. The scored questions, as you can see on the right hand side there, for example, question eight, quality of management, that's worth 20%. So these questions are scored. The scoring criteria is in volume one and I recommend that you read it and understand it. For example, there's 10 for an excellent answer, zero for no answer. And this is applied absolutely consistently. We don't compare providers' answers, you know, we won't compare one provider with another and think, well, the answer was better than the other answer. So we'll score accordingly. The only thing we benchmark against is the scoring criteria that is explained in detail in volume one, introduction and scope. Each answer, as you can see on the screen, has a word limit. For example, question eight there has a word limit of 500 words. Anything over and above that, we will just simply ignore. So if, you know, the 500th word is in the middle of a sentence, we will stop evaluating that answer in the middle of a sentence. And any excess words simply will be ignored. So please do keep within the word count. However, we won't punish people for going over. We simply won't, we won't read the words that are over and above the word count. As you can see, attachments are not allowed. This is really, we're going to get a lot of responses to this procurement. And if we allow attachments, we will be, we will be reading for a long, long time. So we'd like you to be succinct and put all the information into the word count. No attachments. If you do submit attachments, we simply, we simply won't read them, I'm afraid. Diagrams are acceptable as part of the, as part of your response. Any words in the diagram will go towards the word limits. Please answer in the format requested and don't combine answers. I had a procurement some months ago where a provider didn't answer in the format requested. There are about 10 questions and they simply provided a big document which combined sort of all the questions into one. And we had to disregard that despite the fact they'd put a lot of effort into it. We need the responses in the format requested. Simply to be fair to everybody. We only accept applications via the your tender system. I hope you're all familiar with that. There is instructions, I think Go For Growth have done some instructions on that. Volume two in the procurement documents does explain how to register and how to apply, et cetera. But we won't accept responses by email, et cetera. This is, we need everything going through one system in order that we know everything's in the one place. If you're applying for more than one list, for example, supportive living and residential nursing, you only need to provide one set of responses. You don't need to respond per list. So that's good news for you. You don't need to answer everything more than once for more than one list. After you've responded and we've evaluated, we will let you know whether you've been successful or unsuccessful. If you're unsuccessful, you will be able to reapply to the list. However, as made clear in volume one, that might be when the list reopens. It's an open list, but we will be onboarding every three months. So you might need to wait until after the approved provider list has started and sort of the next round of admissions, the approved provider list has started. And lastly, as made clear at the top there, you'll be required to achieve a minimum of 30 points, or that's equates to 60% across all of the scored questions in order to be accepted onto the approved provider list. That's an average of six out of 10 for each question. As I say, the scoring criteria is absolutely clear. We do feel we need to put a benchmark on quality. We haven't evaluated quality as part of these lists previously. But we do really need to assure ourselves of the quality of the providers providing care in North Yorkshire. So we've set a benchmark of 60% in order to be accepted onto the list. And just to be clear, you only need to do it once for each. In total, you don't need to do it for each list. And if you don't succeed, you can try again, although there might be, you might have to wait a few months until the next, the next round. I think we'll probably do questions, go through all the questions right at the end. So that's it from me. I'll pass over to Hannah to do the pricing element, which is volume four and appendix two.
Sure, thanks, Tim. If you just bear with me because I'm going to stop sharing and then reshare. Bear with me. Okay, so initially I'll just share, I'll just share volume four. I don't propose to work through this line by line or word by word. As Tim references there, the two documents that particularly refer to the pricing submission of this procurement are volume four and appendix two. Volume four largely acts as a guidance document to appendix two. So strongly suggests that you, that you work your way through volume four before attempting to complete appendix two, which is the spreadsheet. But I'll just work through this very quickly. So volume four just breaks down each of the four lists. So as Tim suggests, the actual application form and the quality questions, you only need to complete those once as a provider. But if you are applying to more than one list, so residential and nursing and supported living, for example, you do need to make sure that you're completing the pricing submission, so appendix two for both of those lists. So that it's one document but has two tabs and I'll show you that. But just to make sure that you're very clear that you do, you would do need to submit the pricing for both lists or even all four lists, should you be applying across all four. But the, the application form itself is per provider. So this just walks you through each of the lists in terms of the guidance documents. The main focus around residential nursing care is the implementation of the actual cost of care rate across North Yorkshire. And you've got a table within volume four here that shows you the direct care hours that relate to actual cost of care, but are actually the direct care hours that you will submit your weekly rate for if you do not accept the actual cost of care or if the actual cost of care doesn't apply. So you do need to make sure that you're referring to this, these direct care hours within volume four when submitting your rates for residential and nursing. We just scroll down, it talks about home-based support there. So if you've attended the home-based support webinar, you'll know that home-based support now applies to all services delivered within a person's home, be they regulated or non-regulated. So you'll submit rates for home-based support services via the appendix two document. If you're a current provider, it's a similar principle to currently in that you'll submit urban, rural and super rural rates. And there's maps for those included within the procurement documents so that you know across the large geography of North Yorkshire, each of our district localities has a map. It's a bit like a fried egg is the easiest way for me to describe it. And it shows you geographically where the urban, urban, rural and super rural areas are within that locality. So your yoke is your urban area, your white is your rural area and anything beyond that is super rural. So that will just help you to, to break down your rates. And we just recognise that in those super rural areas, you may need to think about different rates for delivering services in those areas. And those rates need to be subdivisible, subdivisible by four. The document just makes reference to the council's 15 minute call guidance. We are seeking a move away from that where possible, although we recognise that 15 minute calls are appropriate for such things as welfare calls and practical support. We don't envisage to be commissioning 30 minute calls for any personal care services, but do make sure that you reference, that you make reference to that 15 minute call guidance as well when completing this procurement and the appendix two. We just move further down, just talked about community-based support there. So the biggest change here is that community-based support providers will be asked to submit an hourly rate for their services, whereas previously we've accepted session rates. So it'll be an hourly rate with the ability for you as a provider to submit a minimum number of hours that you require a person to attend your services. But we're just trying to move away from that standard session, standard sessions and session rates to move towards a bit of flexibility within community-based support services. So quite a big change there for providers to think about hourly rates. And again, as Jill said at the beginning, any particular questions that you have about pricing for your services, we just ask that those come through the clarification process rather than this webinar specifically. And then we've got supported living, just some detail around supported living there. So supported living and home-based support services. Again, I'll show you in a second, but we've provided some average, the average current rates for services and providers are being asked to submit rates within 10% of that, where rates are above 10% higher than the average that we have provided, then there's a request for some rationale within the appendix two. So if you just bear with me, I'll stop sharing that and I'll move directly on to the appendix two itself. If Tim or Jill could just give me a nod to say that I'm sharing the appendix two. Yep.
Yeah, it could probably do with being a bit bigger, I think, Hannah, maybe.
Okay, just bear with me. Yeah, okay. I don't want to make it too big, so I'm scrolling around too much. But yeah, does that look okay?
I think so. It does to me, I think so.
Perfect, okay. So as I say, volume four is almost acts a bit like your guidance document for your pricing submission. And then the actual submission itself is appendix two, which is this spreadsheet here. It's one spreadsheet and it has four tabs at the bottom. So you'll see the tabs here for the, with the four different lists, nursing and residential, home-based support, supported living and community-based support services. So I'll just start with the nursing and residential services. So as I touched on just now, the council has completed an actual cost of care exercise for all residential and nursing services for people over 65 years. So if you're delivering that type of service, you'll be aware of the actual cost of care exercise and the implementation of it. So what we are anticipating as part of this re-procurement is that costs will reflect the actual cost of care where the actual cost of care applies. So the first table within this tab is asking you to, if the actual cost of care rate applies to your services, to mark, to suggest that you accept the actual cost of care as is stated here. Or if you don't accept the actual cost of care where it applies, which is to these services for over 65, you propose your rate in column D here. Obviously, the actual cost of care rate only applies to services for people over 65. So where you're delivering services for under 65, you will just propose your rate here because the actual cost of care rate is not applicable. What you just need to, just need to be mindful of here is even where you're not accepting the actual cost of care or the actual cost of care rate doesn't apply, you must make sure that the weekly rate you're submitting in column D is a weekly rate for the direct care hours listed in volume four. So the table that I just showed you in volume four, you need to make reference to that when you're providing that weekly rate because it's a weekly rate for those direct care hours that you're submitting in column D. Okay, so if we just move further down, this table here is for all providers. So if you accept the actual cost of care or you don't accept the actual cost of care or it doesn't apply, we're asking you to break down the weekly, the weekly rate that you're submitting. So you'll provide a breakdown of how you've reached, how you've reached your weekly rate for those direct care hours. Then what we're asking you to do is to provide an hourly rate for any additional one-to-one support. So additional one-to-one support will only be commissioned where a person is assessed as requiring over and above the direct care hours stated in volume four. So what we're asking you to do is provide an hourly rate for those hours that are over and above. And those, as I say, will be by assessment and we will pay this agreed hourly rate that you'll submit at the point of application. Okay, and then I'm just moving to this box at the bottom, which is fairly standard across all of the tabs. So where you do not accept the actual cost of care where it applies, or if the actual cost of care rate doesn't apply to your services, we're asking you to provide a rationale for your rate. So we're asking you to consider market forces and just allow us to ensure value for money in accepting any rates over and above or out with the actual cost of care. We're asking you to provide a rationale for your weekly rate. We're not disputing that there might be, you know, good reason for the rate that you submit, but we're just asking you to provide that rationale of the rate that you've submitted if it falls out with the actual cost of care rate. So that's just the box there for you to do that. That'll just allow us to complete an assessment of that rate. And if we require any further information to allow us to complete that assessment, we'll do that via the clarification process on your tender directive view as the provider. Okay, I'm just going to move through and take questions at the end, I think, if that's okay. So I'll just move on to the home-based support list tab. This probably looks quite busy on the screen, so apologies. This is not largely different to previously in that, as I mentioned, we're asking you to submit rates against each of the different services that are delivered under this list. So this list is for all services in a person's home. So that's regulated personal care, generic and complex, practical support, sitting services, both regulated and non-regulated, and then living, living care. So for each of those different services, we've got an urban, I'll scroll across, urban, rural and super rural. It looks very busy, but hopefully when you come to fill it in, it's not quite as complex as it looks. And then you've got the different localities down the left hand side, recognising that the, the cost of delivering care may vary, may vary across locality and may vary according to urban, rural and super rural delivery. So what the rates in red are here are the current averages for, that we are paying for delivering these types of services by locality and by urban, rural and super rural. What we're asking you to do is provide your proposed hourly rate in the box alongside that. Where that rate falls above 10% of the locality average or indeed below the 10% of the locality average, we're asking you to provide a rationale of that here. So in the same way as residential and nursing, we can, as a council, we can complete an assessment of that rate, considering market forces, value for money and the services you're delivering. So where it falls out with that 10% of the locality average stated in red, we're asking you for that rationale there. And again, you'll see that we're asking you to provide a breakdown of the hourly, of the hourly rate here. This breakdown is the standard cost, based on the standard costing model used by the Home Care Association. So if you're familiar with that, you will hopefully be familiar with some of these headings in terms of your costing model. Okay, just move now on to the supported living tab. So again, we're asking for hourly rates. So you will provide an hourly rate for individual and core support as defined in the service specification. So individual support being the one-to-one support to the person within the home and the core support being that support that's to the property and shared across individuals. But you'll provide an hourly rate for individual and core support and an hourly rate for your sleep in support. And then we're asking you to just state whether there are the number of hours that you deliver as part of your sleeping, if that varies from eight, which is, which is fairly standard across the county. So if that differs, we just need you to specify that there. We've provided a county-wide average rate of the current rates for supported living. The reason we haven't broken it down by locality is that there was negligible variance across the county. So we've provided that county-wide average rate there. We've provided you with the definition of intensive or enhanced support, just so that you're, you're clear about the circumstances under which we will pay that higher rate for intensive or enhanced support. We've just asked you on here as well, just to provide the details of the current properties that you have within North Yorkshire, the current supported living properties. So where there are a standard number of core hours and the number of hours per sleeping against each of those properties, just so that we're clear when we're broker in placements within those properties, the number of core hours that's available to a person should they move into that property. Again, the common feature around asking you to break down your rate. And again, that's in line with the HCA costing model. And then that familiar box at the end here, which just asks you to provide a rationale for your rate if it falls out with 10% of that county-wide average that we've provided above. So some similarities there between the home-based support and supported living pricing submission. And then lastly, I'll just move on to the community-based support tab. So as I say, the most significant change here to, to the submission for providers of community-based support services is the provision of an hourly rate as opposed to a session rate. We've just provided the definitions here that are lifted directly from the service specification, just for your reference. And you will provide an hourly rate against each of those types of services. We recognise that you may, you may charge different rates for different levels of service, low, intermediate and high. And you will need to make direct reference to the service specification for the definitions of low, intermediate and high services. And you will need to make direct reference to the service specification for the definitions of low, intermediate and high services. You'll provide you the hourly rate and the minimum number of hours per day if there are a minimum number of hours that you require people to attend. Just to make clear, as previously with community-based support services, the prices submitted shouldn't include charges for meals or for transport. They're non-chat, they are, they're not included within, within the costing for, for your services. So you need to make sure that you're not including those costs within the hourly rate. And then again, just a breakdown, just a breakdown here. I have noticed a question in the chat actually, and I'm just noticing, I was struggling to, to see where that was an issue. But actually, I think we have got a typo here on this form, Tim. I'm just noticing that it says weekly rate here, where actually we're referring to hourly rate throughout. And I think that references one of the questions that's come through in the chat. So I just think we just need to pick that up because we are very clear that it is an hourly rate that you are submitting as part of the community, to join the community-based support list. So I think we just need to, to pick that up as part of clarification, Tim. Okay. I think that's it from me. Happy to take any questions. Stop sharing.
Thank you, thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim and Hannah.
I'm a bit echoey. So there are a, a number of questions. There are some that are very specifically linked to pricing. So I just want to reiterate, in terms of how do we price X, if there's an uplift, how do we do that? A very specific pricing question should go through the clarification question process as opposed to it being answered here. And that's really so that actually when the authority answer that, it goes to everybody who is interested and expressed interest in the opportunity, not just those who are on today's webinar. But if we try and get through some of the questions, I know we've only got a few minutes left anyway of the session, but if we try and get through some, there's a couple that I think are quite easy for us to answer. So negotiation on word count, Tim. Is there any?
I, I appreciate that point around a hundred words. And you, you're quite right to mention examples as well because that's part of the scoring criteria, that for, in order to achieve a higher mark, exact supporting examples should be used. I will, I will go back to the project team on that. In all honesty, I'm not sure whether we, whether we would increase it, but I will, I will ask that question and I will, I'll put it on the clarification spreadsheet that's on your tender. So all providers, as Jill said, all providers need to be aware of sort of questions and answers. So I will respond to it via the clarification questions on, on your tender.
Do you want to do that for any questions that we don't get through today or all the questions, even if we table them today? Because we'll take the transcript and then push them through clarification question responses as well. Does that feel like the right thing to do? Yeah. Okay. There was just one question around if a provider was applying for different lists, so residential care and day services, the responses might be quite different. So a hundred words might be taken up just for one of those services. So if they've got a different service, would they fill the quality section out twice or still just once?
Just the ones, we only, we only require it to be, to be done once.
And, and so is it for the provider just to use that word count as wisely as they can?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Can I check that the, the, the scoring section, that it's the quality section that scored, is pricing scored?
Pricing, pricing isn't scored. The, what, what the council will do if providers are submitting rates out with the actual cost of care where that applies or out with the ten percent of the, the locality averages that are provided within the pricing submission document, the council will complete an assessment of that rate based on the rationale that's provided. And we may go back to the provider for some clarification around that to undertake an assessment, but there is, it isn't a scored element of the procurement.
Okay, I thought that had come up on a previous webinar and we'd had a question that was around that. If an organisation has more than one home, and I presume that means a residential care home, does the process have to be done separately for each care home? And I guess, sorry.
Do you want to pick that up, Tim? Because I think we had a clarification on that that we've already responded, that you responded to.
Yeah, we responded to it. If, if you've got different sort of care homes, different areas and there's a different price for it, say, you know, a care home in Harrogate has a higher price, for example, you would, you would sort of mention that in appendix two, you, you'd split out sort of the different prices and, and tell us the different homes. Because we're accepting the application as per provider rather than, rather than per home. If, if the, the prices are the same for each care home, you wouldn't duplicate appendix two, it'd only be if, if there are different prices.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And, and if a service enters costings for services but decides to take up another service, and I guess that when we're talking about service, that is, decides to offer, to old want to be on another approved provider list. Can new costings be sent through? Or do they have to wait for the next application date? So I think if they wanted to grow their services as an approved provider from one list to another, they would have to apply for the extra approved provider list at the next submission date. Is that right? Does, did I make that clear?
So I think so. So I think we've had a few emails about this from some providers who are actively developing their services, but their services won't be ready to join the, the new approved provider list in time for the, in, in this first window of opportunity. And I think what we would always ask providers to do as a, within, within the area is to actively work with us within the service development team as part of your, as part of your business development. So keep us abreast of any developments so that, so that we're aware that they're coming. It may be that if you're not ready to apply within this first window and it might not be appropriate for you to do so because remember you need to be submitting sustainable rates for the duration of, duration of the list. So don't just apply now if you're not ready to. Apply when you're ready to and you're able to make a, you know, an accurate assessment of what those sustainable rates will be. It may be that you need to wait until the next window of onboarding. However, there are conditions within the procurement that allow us to onboard more frequently if there is a particular need within a locality, particular issues with market capacity or a particular need to make a placement. So you know, we don't have to wait for the three monthly intervals if, if there is a specific need within the locality. So I think what I'm saying is apply at the time that is right for you. Don't apply now if it's too early. And, and keep in touch with us about new developments within your services so that we know to, to be aware and we know we can look out for that and, and onboard early if there is a particular need within a locality or within that market. Does that answer your question?
I think so. Yes, it does. Thank you. And, and also I think we've had a question in the chat around if, if we don't apply now, if we miss the deadline for any reason, when is the, the next deadline for submission? And I think you were saying it might be every three months when you reopen submissions, is that right?
Yeah. I think we've said three months, that will be kind of the regular review, won't it, Tim? But again, we will actively as a council be monitoring kind of market conditions within each of the localities and we'll take that into account as is detailed in the, in the procurement documents as well.
And there has been a comment in the chat also about understanding regarding the quality questions that we don't want additional evidence submitting. Can we confirm what additional evidence attachments they should provide with the application? I think each question makes it quite clear what you can or can't submit and the word count and everything to do with each question is in the documentation, isn't it, Tim, I think?
That's right, yeah. We're not, we're not allowing attachments and that's simply, it would, it would be a very big job to, to, to do that. So all the evidence needs to be in, in the, the written response within the word count.
Yeah, and diagrams are permissible. I think it's also, it's quite clear that diagrams are permissible. Do diagrams play, do they form part of the word count?
Yes, there's words used, diagrams will form part of the workout. That isn't actually mentioned in the procurement documents, but we had a clarification question around it. So that's all the clarification questions, of course, on your tender on a, on a single spreadsheet. So advisable to familiarise yourselves with that.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. I think it's good advice. The, the clarification question process is an important one for providers to read through each time it's updated and, and sent back out through your tender. I think you've talked through the, the map around urban, rural and super rural. That's the fried egg, isn't it? So the yoke is the urban, the white is the rural and anything outside of that white is super rural, but that map is enclosed in the documents, isn't it?
Yeah, I think there's six or seven maps for each of the localities that breaks it down like a Friday.
Okay. So there has been a question on that. If the documentation and the maps and, and Hannah's explanation today doesn't quite answer your question, again, if you want to put a more detailed question through the clarification process, that will be perfect. We've also had a question on who to contact if there's new services that, that providers are developing that you're not necessarily capturing through this procurement.
So that would, the first point of call there would always be the, the has service development team, which is the lovely team that I work in. So we have a standard, a standard inbox that you can contact. And then we have a range of managers and officers working in each of the localities in North Yorkshire who would be really happy to hear from you and discuss developments and particular challenges and gaps within their locality. So I can pop that in the, in the chat box, Jill, is that the best?
Yeah, that would be great. That would be really good. And, and how long is the approved provider list for? How long does it last once it's live?
Lasts for up to seven years. It's essentially, it's a five-year initial term and then a possible two-year extension.
Okay, perfect. And we did have a, a question about can you download a copy before you fill in the document online? Absolutely. That's how you will do it. You'll, you'll download it, you'll complete it and then re-upload it as part of your submission. That's how the process works. Quickly, I know we've only got literally one or two minutes left. I'll quickly check the Q and A. If an organisation has multiple services and two, you know, multiple different ways of delivering support, do they need to complete the form for each support or not? I, I think what you said was the answer was no. So if you, if you're delivering different services, you'll price them separately, won't you, for each approved provider list? But the quality section is just to be completed once, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Again, if that explanation doesn't quite get to the heart of the detail that you're trying to capture in the question, please do feel free to ask more detail in the clarification questions. And we have reached the end of the session. It was just a forty-five minute session today. There are some other questions that are still in there. As Tim and Hannah have said, we'll take a transcript of all the questions, both from chat and Q and A, and we'll flow the answers out in the clarification question process so that everybody can see the same answer that we're, that we're giving. If there's anything else that you need, please do use that clarification process in the live procurement. If you have any process-related questions in terms of your registration or getting to the documents or uploading them, do feel free to give Go For Growth a shout. And we have a drop-in session next week on the twenty-third. So if there are further questions, it's at ten o'clock. I'll send the registration details out with the follow-up with the video from today. If you want to come along to that as well, please do feel free to. We've got another one on the thirtieth as well. So we've got another couple whilst the procurement is live and we can extend these drop-in sessions if we need to. So thank you everybody for coming. It's been a dead busy session. Thank you Hannah and Tim. That was really useful, super helpful. And we'll get the copy of the recording out to everybody, hopefully today, if not latest tomorrow. Thank you all.
Thanks, Jill.
Thanks. Bye, Hannah. Bye.